We're going to go ahead and call the City Council Redevelopment Agency, City Council Meeting of Monday, February 28th, 2005, to order. If you could take a moment and please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form.
Item two on our agenda this evening is changes to the order of the agenda. Is there any changes from my fellow council members? Does the staff have any changes?
No, Madam Mayor.
Anyone from the public? Okay. Next item, 3A, under Council Reports is a status report on the recruitment of the new city manager, and I would ask our Human Resources Director, Andrea Greenberg, to give us a quick update on the status of our recruiting process.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Andrea, could you speak up a little bit? It's kind of hard to hear you. You just have to talk directly into the mic.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if it's on. It is on.
You don't project as well.
Good, I have a soft voice. I'll try to project a bit better. Just to remind you, we had sent out an RFP to four vendors, and we had a due date of February 25th, which was last Friday. All four of them responded, and I'm now going over those proposals. The council had asked that we get an idea about how long this recruitment would take, and in looking at all four proposals, they're pretty darn close in line, and it looks like about 16 weeks from the time we start, to the point at which we could actually make a hire. But then you have to add another three to four weeks for whoever you hire for the personal situation, if it's somebody from another city, making arrangements, et cetera. So I would say maybe 19 to 20 weeks on the outside.
So we're looking at four to six months.
Yeah. Yeah, I projected it, and we're talking about roughly second week in July.
And in terms of the cost, do you have any idea in terms of range?
I do. We're talking about probably between $24,000 to $26,000, and that includes reimbursed expenses. The proposals all came in at about $18,000 to $19,000, and then there's reimbursed expenses.
So in terms of the process, what are the next steps?
Well, the next step will be that I'll review and make a selection, and then I will contact the mayor, and we'll go from there. It'll be, at that point, the process will be unfolding, and we'll have to talk about what we want to do.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think we'll probably be doing that in the next couple days. I'm hoping to be able to really focus on that tomorrow.
Okay. Does anyone have questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Other council reports. I'll start with Tom.
I do have a few. Let me start with the CK group, the Congestion Management and Air Quality Committee. We call that CMAC. Just let you know we had a meeting this afternoon, and talked about the application of funds that will be coming from the recent approval in the $4 per year vehicle license fee. And the funds are to be allocated both to the county and to the cities, and to new projects and to old. So there's a wide variety of applications, and CK Board will be reviewing this at their next meeting and probably making a decision on it. Then switching to the SBSA, Jim Bealy is retiring after his term with the water treatment plant. He's been there since it started. So he'll be retiring the middle part of 2006. We have a recruitment starting there as well, and we'll be beginning to look at candidates toward the summer, and hopefully have someone onboard by the end of the year. So that's going to be a very interesting process. There are three candidates at SBSA that are interested, and we will take this to the broad market and look around and find the best person for the job.
Those are internal candidates?
Pardon me?
Those are internal candidates?
I'm sorry?
You said those are internal candidates, three candidates?
Internal, yes. And then finally, I attended the parks meeting, the Parks for the Future, and that's also reaching a very high, interesting, high-energy level, and a very interesting process. Critical areas are, how do we raise the money? There's two possibilities, one's a parcel tax, and one's an increase in sales tax. And those two are now being deliberated, and there will be a recommendation soon, presumably. And then the important issue of how the money gets spent. Initially, on the table is a 50-50 split between the county parks and all city parks. And then how will cities share in the amount for parks? And is that on the basis of parkland, or people, or a combination? And that's all to be decided. So they're not ready for prime time yet in terms of bringing it out into the public sphere, but it won't be too long, and there will be recommendations that will be advanced to the county. So those three committees are alive and well.
Thank you, Tom. Matt?
Thank you. Two things to report. One is that I'm serving on, of course, as you know, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee of CK, and we recently went through a process, we had 27 applications for grant funding this year. It's a pretty long, drawn-out process of going and seeing all the projects and so forth. And I was actually a little dismayed, because our, as you know, our city engineers have been out ill, and so when we went out on the Saturday to look at the projects, we did not come to Belma, or to San Carlos because of that situation. And I thought, oh no, this is going to hurt us, because it's really good to go see the projects. And then the night that we did the presentations, and the board members gave their scores on the projects, well, the night that we gave the presentations, Don Gilbert came and did a wonderful job of doing a presentation for us. And then at our last meeting, we actually voted and scored the projects. And I was thrilled, absolutely thrilled, that San Carlos scored the highest out of 27 projects with our application for bike paths. I think they're on Britton, the Alameda, and a couple other places we've got some projects going on. We had a score of 88, and like I say, that was the highest of all the projects. And so I just wanted to really, first, I want to commend Tom, because I know he worked before I did. He served on B-PAC in advance of me, and worked really hard to represent San Carlos on that. And then I know Tom worked hard to get a B-PAC going for us. I wanted to commend Mike, because I know he, when we were talking about it, he dug his feet in a little bit and said, I don't know, is this necessary? And in the end, he was behind it. And so I think it's great that here we've got this freshman B-PAC, we put in a project, and we have the top project. Now, that doesn't guarantee funding by any means, but it sure looks good.
Sounds good, though.
It sounds very good.
Now, staff put together the application for that?
Well, it was a combination of our B-PAC made the recommendations and worked with staff to put together the application, yes.
So I think we should recognize staff as well for obviously putting together-
I'd like to comment on that, that it's really the process, so those of you who remember when Jeff Klein was coming, it is a very fair process, and we do score, sitting there for almost 11 years now, watching the process, we do come out very well. We get more than our share of money out of CK, be it bikes, transportation, or whatever, but it is a fair process. So not visiting the sites really kind of immaterial, it's just how you make that process, and the score is real fair. It's a fair process.
Well, it does affect the scoring in the sense that, I know as one who does, yeah, when you see it, it really makes an impression on you, and you get to see the validity of the project. So it can affect how you look at it, but nonetheless, I was very proud. The second thing is, I serve on the Airport Land Use Committee, and-
This is for the San Carlos Airport?
Well, it's for all the airports in the county, but we look, one of the airports we're looking at is San Carlos. And I brought this tonight, because one of the things we're looking at is redefining what's known as the Avisation Easement. And this was on our agenda at the last meeting, and the idea is to increase the size of the Avisation Easement to match what's called the AIA, the Airport Influence Area. And Barbara Pierce, who's a council member from Redwood City, had some issues with this and challenged it, and so partly because it impacts Redwood Cities, and Redwood City's downtown. And so what we did is we created a subcommittee to look at this issue, and it's Barbara Pierce, myself, and Mark Church, and we'll be working with Dave Carbone. Now, the reason I bring this up tonight is because I want to make staff aware of it, and our planning director, because I don't feel fully prepared, if you will, to go into an ad hoc committee meeting and make recommendations on behalf of our whole city on this issue. And so I'm asking our staff to contact Dave Carbone at the Airport Land Use Office and get some background material, and also if the city staff could make a recommendation on a position we may want to take as a city on this issue. I know Sam Carr has given some advice on it, and some other folks might as well, including San Carlos residents, might want to look into it if they're interested.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Don?
Just a couple of things. Vice Mayor Grocott and I continue to meet actually fairly regularly on a Building Department ad hoc, let's work with the situation, let's try to make everything a little more user-friendly sort of a committee, and I think we continue to make good progress there. We meet with Mr. Garvey, we meet with Jack Ayala, who's our Building Department Head, and Liz Collinan, our Planning Director, has been involved lately. And we're kind of reviewing a whole bunch of things, the end goal of which is to come up with, you know, a good summary of what our review has been about. We'll bring this back to the council at a later date and get some more specific input with our recommendations, but we are making pretty good progress on that. I think you'd agree, Matt, right?
Yeah, totally.
Lastly, and I had way too much on my mind last council meeting, but I would like to report on an absolutely outstanding sixth annual week of the family that we had this year. The co-chairs, again, were Joyce Strauss and John Volkert, and the events were all well-attended. There was great support from the schools, from our staff, from everybody involved. The results are, you know, far more than what is even measurable, we believe, in terms of creating community, and creating the type of community specifically that I think we can all be proud of, and everyone that I bumped into thought that everything was just a raging success this year.
Except, I think, I want to recount on the chili cook-off. I think we got aced.
Well, you know, the firemen cook a mean chili, so-
The police is here, I want some support next year from the police department.
Mike, do you have anything to report?
I have one item, Madam Mayor. Earlier before today's meeting, we had a preliminary meeting with two consultants, and this body has charged Matt and I with the responsibility of coming back with a recommendation, and we did. We came back recommending that this body interview two of the candidates who we felt would provide us more than what I called a scaled-down project that had originally been envisioned. I know Matt and I both call, we're not calling this visioning. We're not calling this visioning, even though we titled it the same, but it is really a look to the future. And I'd like to ask my fellow council members to let us select an individual, one of the two candidates we interviewed today, and then push it back to staff to negotiate with the successful party and decide, let's get on with the process.
Okay. Do we need a formal vote, or you would just like direction?
Well, we can throw it open here if you want, for an item for a vote.
Does anybody have any, oh, wait, 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 sorry. Bob's, let the city attorney weigh in first.
Yeah, as opposed to taking action, since it's not actually on the agenda, want to give direction to staff?
It is on the agenda.
Well, the interviewing was on the agenda, but not for taking action by the council. Want to give some direction to staff as to who we should negotiate. Could you do that?
So we could give direction to staff to solicit an RFP, or, I'm sorry, solicit a contract from, okay. Or we could give direction to our council subcommittee to work with staff to solicit a contract to bring back for review and possible consideration.
Okay.
Okay.
So how do we choose one or the other?
I'll leave that to the subcommittee, I would imagine. Tom, did you want to weigh in on this?
Well, I have an observation. Not having heard from the committees or been a part of the selection process, I did hear a lot about visioning. And if we're not visioning, what are we doing? And what are we hiring these folks to do if it's not vision? And I'm a little unclear about the direction and the, you know, the instructions-
Tom, I think it was just a selection of a word. Matt and I had received input from private citizens saying, we already went through this visioning process. We're saying, this is not the visioning process that went through for the downtown. This is not the visioning process we went through for the-
For South Laurel. South Laurel.
South Laurel. It is visioning, but strategic development is strategic planning for the future, and I think you saw both of these presentations tonight, which were kind of amended than what we saw the first time through. But, I mean, I'll just kind of kick it open, saying I feel comfortable with either one, but we're kind of looking for direction from you. That's why I went back and looked at my own scorecards from the first night and had a-
And if it means anything, Inga had mentioned about the subcommittee choosing. Mike and I chatted a little bit between the interviews and this meeting, and I chose one, and he chose the other, so we're finding some way.
Okay.
Well, then back to an observation. I thought they were both, did very well, and made excellent presentations. And if I'm thinking, as you're all thinking about visioning, what visioning really is, although we don't call it visioning, you know, what direction's the community going? It seems to me that MIG probably is a stronger candidate because of their experience with other communities. And I think if I had to pick one or the other, I would select MIG.
Okay. Don, do you want to weigh in?
Sure. I both thought, or I thought that both of the firms are very professional, very thorough in their presentations, even though they were limited. In terms of the background, and in terms of what they presented tonight that I could relate to, I tend to agree with Tom. I think that MIG, I mean, I know what the process is going to be about, and it's involving people, and I've seen it a bunch of different times in different areas, so I think that both could do a very, very adequate job. I just had a little bit, I don't know, your intuition, or whatever you want to call it, that I thought that MIG might be a little bit better fit for what we're about here, but that doesn't at all rule out, you know, the Applied Development Economics firm either, because I think they were very good.
I guess I'll weigh in. I actually, like my colleagues, felt that either consulting firm could do a, probably a fairly good job at strategic planning. Two observations. I actually liked the process described by Applied Development Economics over the process described by MIG. And the reason being is that it was, it spent more time on actual issue identification, design, and public input than the MIG process looked to do. Also, I think knowing San Carlos and the speed at which things move through this, I think nine months is probably more appropriate than six months. I mean, if we're talking about coming up with a strategic plan for the next 10, 15 years, I don't want to be constrained to six months. Let's hurry up and do this, because that's what we've got in the budget. And then the other thing that I liked about Applied Development Economics was their recognition that economic development was part of the overall picture, because you can't just set this vision and say, you know what, if we had the money, we should, you know, have additional parklands. If we had the money, we should have El Camino be a grand boulevard, without the recognition that you need to have the economic development, which is either going to come from property taxes or sales tax revenue increases, because the state keeps taking away any other money. So that's, I liked that it was more, a more comprehensive perspective, I think, rather than this visioning. And I think it really is, from my perspective, we need to come up with a strategic plan, how, you know, where is it that we as a city should go, want to go, from a community base, as well as how are we going to get there from an economic development perspective? And, you know, I did ask the question specifically of MIG, and I didn't really hear the response I expected to hear when it came back in terms of economic development, and sort of how the economic development picture feeds into the health of a city in terms of fiscal programs. So that was, that was my take on it.
Okay, I guess we got directions. And we'll convene with Jeff and get back to both of the parties. And with the council's approval, we'd like to get on this as quickly as possible. We're not going to wait, because I know both the parties are here tonight.
Okay.
And I think we'll try to come back to you with the agenda's item and get it done, voted on. Okay?
Okay. Great.
All right.
Any other council reports? I didn't have any council reports, other than the one about Mike Garvey. Under 4A, we, I have a plaque, actually, I don't believe Steve Kaufman is here in the audience. Steve Kaufman was actually a member of our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee from 2003, 2004, and we generally recognize people who have served on our city boards and commissions with a plaque on their retirement. So Christine, if you could make sure that Steve gets that plaque, that would be wonderful. And Steve, if you're watching from home, we certainly appreciated your time and effort spent on that commission. 4B actually is a proclamation to two citizens, and I don't believe that they're here either. We had, so we're going to put this on a future agenda. We had actually two citizens, my understanding was that they were involved in a call at Walgreens during a burglary that was there, and so they were very heroic in that. So next meeting, hopefully, they'll get on the agenda. And then the last is, we have a young woman in our community, actually, who has been working tirelessly for the rights for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community, and I don't see Marina here either, but she's, I do have a proclamation here for her. She's the daughter of two women that live here in San Carlos. She's grown up here, she's attended local schools, and she continues to speak out about the rights of all individuals, not just lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender. So we'll make sure that she gets this proclamation as well. Next item is public comment. This is a 10-minute maximum period of time at this point, that is for persons who wish to address the city council on an item that's not on our posted agenda, and each speaker will be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak during public comment? Matt? Do you want to go down to the podium, since your speaking is public comment?
Not necessarily.
Oh, okay.
That's all right. I just wanted to make a brief statement. At the last city council meeting, and also last week, I received comments, one instance respectively, from constituents regarding my press release about Mr. Garvey and his voluntary resignation as city manager. So I just would like to say the following in regards to that. The press release was intended to reassure San Carlos residents that our city government would maintain a steady course during change that is taking place in City Hall. My point was that the resignation of Mr. Garvey should not be pessimistically construed as a sign of trouble or instability, but should instead be optimistically viewed as an opportunity to reevaluate where we are and where we want to go, somewhat relates to what we did tonight with those interviews. My press release stated that I was not surprised at Mr. Garvey's decision, and that after more than 17 years of public service to San Carlos, he had a fair opportunity to accomplish his goals, and of course, Mr. Garvey's record speaks for itself. I applaud Mr. Garvey for making the decision that he did, and believe that it presents new and exciting opportunities, both for him and his successor. I anticipate a smooth transition, and as I said in the press release, I appreciate that Mr. Garvey was attentive to wrapping up loose ends, and I gave as an example the choosing of our new police chief, who's in the audience tonight, before announcing his own departure. Mr. Garvey has announced that he plans to seek new employment or greener pastures in the private sector. I wish him well, and thank him for his years of public service to the city of San Carlos.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Next item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Do any of my fellow council members wish to pull an item?
I have a number of items. E, F, H, and I.
With H, did you want to pull that, or you just wanted to register a no vote?
Oh, did I say H? I'm sorry. No, I do not want to pull H, I just want to register a no vote on it.
Okay. Tom?
No.
Anyone else? Is there any, Matt, any member of staff that wishes to pull anything?
No, Madam Mayor.
Anyone from the public?
Madam Mayor, I'd move the consent calendar, A through D, G, H, and J, and H is the Adoption of the Ordinance 1355, adopting a plan of development purpose, purposes of, for the purpose of constructing approximately 30,000 square foot building for office and light use industrial at 800 Britton Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made, and second, and Christine, would you call the question, please?
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes, and again, with a no vote on item H.
And Mayor Teagle authority?
Yes. Okay. 6E. Matt?
Thank you. I, this is the acceptance, the consent calendar item E is acceptance of annual financial reports for the city of San Carlos and the Redevelopment Agency. And my question only has to do with the report on the city of San Carlos. I did take note when I was reading through this that we had a number of areas where we were over budget. They were in the Public Works Department, Public Safety, Community Development, and let me see, I think there was another one, in Finance and City Clerk, and in the City Manager's Office, if I did not say that already. So my question is, it does say in the report on page 63 that expenditures that exceed appropriations at the fund level must be approved by city council, and it lists the different areas. And I particularly, I don't know, I'd put it to the rest of my council members, if we might want to have a closer look at some of these areas where we were over budget. And for me, I have particular concern with areas where we have consultants in Public Works and in Finance where we've gone over budget, to look a little more closely at what those areas are and what the causes are, and perhaps at the other areas as well, because, as you know, tonight, we're going to be looking at budget adjustments, and it talks about, one of the things you mentioned, Richard, in that is that we, you usually forecast conservatively in terms of revenues, and then are a little liberal in expenditures with the hopes that revenues come in stronger and expenditures are not quite as high, and then you end up with somewhat of a surplus, if you will. So, again, my question is, if we might look closer at some of these-
Perhaps, Richard, would you like to first speak to the process by which we spend more than the budget allows? Could you speak louder? You're another one of those, Andreas, that needs to project.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm the finance director of San Carlos. I'd like to address a couple of points that were made there. One is, we have a process where we do a mid-year adjustment, and the mid-year adjustment, we last get the budget, we adjusted the direct expenditure, and so the comparison that you see in the financial report is comparison against adjusted numbers. We've not achieved some of those targets as we thought, but some of the overspenders due to revenue activity, because we brought in more revenue than expenditure increase. Finance is an example of that. Of the safety of the public works, the primary over expenditure was, in several parts, was for energy costs, which we underestimated increases that were being passed on by the PGP. So we took a step- So we took a step to correct that over budget, as what our, what it would take, five, four yards to save us, not all of that, uh, but the process.
Could that help?
Wow, and you were doing so well.
Uh, the process that we use for approving overexpenditures is that after the budget adjustment process, we come back in June with our estimates of expenditures, and we ask the council to approve those, those estimates as well as approving the next year's budget. And in a, in the case of a second year budget, approve adjustments to the two-year budget. So there is a process for council to approve our estimates. There is, uh, I think if you look, uh, more deeply into the financial reports, you'll see that revenue more than offsets expenditure costs, but we welcome whatever direction the council would like to make as far as, uh, a more, a closer look at those departments of concern to Councilmember Grocott.
May, may I ask a follow-on question? Actually, I was interested on, on page seven, the change in net assets from this, uh, last year to the year prior was, um, close to $4 million. Is that right? I mean, up, in the positive, $4 million. It changed from a hundred and thirty million, five thirty-seven, six thirty, and again, I'm on page seven.
Right.
To a hundred and thirty-four million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. So, um, is that just strictly from the increase in property values of the city's assets? Or is that actually from additional revenue sources?
That's primarily from our investment in capital projects. Industrial Road added considerably to our overall assets. And our assets that are not land itself are depreciating every year, but when you, the whole purpose of this Gatsby thirty-four restatement of our financial reports is to, to give the council and the public a sense of how we're doing. Are we improving our asset base? Are we, uh, going down? And as long as we're making those kind of investments like we've been making in prior years, we will continue to improve at a, at a rate that outstrips the depreciation. The problem that we come into in lean time is like we've been in, uh, for four years now and foresee for the next couple of years, uh, is that we're not able to invest like we've been investing. I don't know that we can continue to be as successful in getting grants such as the $3 million we got for the industrial road project. That's, that's not on the horizon as it was in the past because there was more federal money to go around, and there was city match, and there's a decreasing amount of both.
Okay. And then one follow-on question to that. Does the, um, the net assets, um, does that affect our ability or, or bondable rating so that it, we can look at getting money more inexpensively out in the bond market, for example?
Um, that, that certainly reflects well. That's one of the considerations is, are we improving our financial health? And it appears that we are improving that health.
Okay. Matt, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I wasn't quite finished.
Matt, can I, before you leave that, because you highlighted on page sixty-three, the, the problem is, we got this on, some of us got it late Sunday, and we didn't get a chance, but, um, uh, the comment that I would make, if you go on to page sixty-five, the, the thing I think that is fair to, we can go over each line item. If you actually look at the public works budget, it's really, the garage was the, is the major offender or major, uh, over expenditure.
Of eighty thousand.
You look at public safety, uh, it's the police patrol, uh, and if you look at, um, third one was community development, it's really building and planning. We're going to talk about a couple of those tonight, you know, where the objective is to cover the cost. Our objective isn't to make revenue. Our objective is to cover the, the allocated cost, right, Richard?
That's correct.
So I would suggest that, that one look specifically of, of a document like that. I assume, you, you're talking about the, the city's financial statement, not the, not the redevelopment.
Right.
Because they're both items, right?
Right.
But if you look further on page sixty-five and, and look at it in a, in a larger scheme, uh, our revenues exceeded our expenditures by, uh, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand. This is pre-transfers, right, Richard? I'm looking on page sixty-five of the.
That is pre-transfers, you're correct.
So that's really what I look. I mean, fundamentally, are we spending, uh, the amount of money we're bringing in without making these transfers, without the transfers, which is the subsequent item? And the answer to that is yes. And, and as Richard said, is a combination of either increasing revenues or decreasing costs. And you can go to each line item and argue about one line item over another, but some of them are interactive, and, uh, you, you know, we are able, particularly on the revenue side, it's been unfair because we've had such a, um, an adjunct of the state coming in and not just taking one item, but they've come in and take, took property tax, flipped the VLF, put it into property. So now you're really, we're getting a skewed kind of, of revenue, um, anticipation, right?
Makes it very difficult to project.
Yeah, because it's not just, we could isolate property, our property value's going up, we're getting part of our property tax revenue, while they've switched it around. So what I think we have to do in this particular year of, of the budget is to look at the, I mean, are we spending more than we're bringing in in that given year?
Um, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood one of the things that you said. Uh, on the columns we have here, we have original, which is the original budget, I am presuming, and then the final, and then actual. And final was our budget adjustment?
Midyear.
That's correct.
Midyear. And then actual is where the spending actually came in at.
That's correct.
Is that right? So you said we, y- you talked about that process, I believe, and you said we are involved in that process. And in some of these instances, even after making the final or that adjustment, then the expenditures still came in, uh, greater than what we, uh, had adjusted for.
Let me rephrase, um, so that perhaps I'm a little clearer. The mid-year adjustment, uh, cycle is something that council weighs in on. They make, they give us their direction. They give us specific, uh, actions to take to adjust the budget. When the council, when the council has presented the proposed budget for the next year, they are also looking at estimates for the current year. In other words, when you saw the oh-four, oh-five, oh-five, oh-six budget, you are also looking at estimates for oh-three, oh-four. The council approves or amends that proposed budget for the next year, and also is approving our estimates for the current year. We could, we could administratively move money between departments and make them all look good or make them all look bad, uh, but what we try to do is keep the expenditures where they belong in their home departments so that we have a true picture of what it costs to operate that. So hopefully, we can learn from that and make better budget estimates in the future. Uh, other than, rather than do another adjustment, ask council to approve moving money between departments, we leave it where it is, where we, where it should be, uh, according to where the expenditures are occurring. But Councilmember Eaton is correct, we don't spread our costs over all of the, um, administrative costs are not spread over all the direct service providers such as police or, or, uh, or planning, uh, the finance, HR, all those budgets are, uh, self-contained. They're not shared by all the departments. So I, I don't know if that makes more sense or less sense, but.
Well, no, it does. Um, I guess what I'm looking for, Richard, is, you know, I've served on boards before where we, uh, where I look at budgets and approve budgets and so forth and give direction to the staff about, you know, where we want things to go. And now maybe it's because it's a smaller organization and see, you tend to be a little bit more, um, involved. But in those cases, uh, often what we would get, what I would get as a board member is, um, you, you might look at last year, as you suggested, and say, okay, you know, here's where we were, and so we're going to use last year's as an example of what we're going to spend for the next year. And if something was, especially if something's, uh, you know, out of kilter or over budget, at least talking about and informing, you know, as a board member, I would get information about why we were over budget. Either it's an aberration because in this case, you know, we've been doing the conference for a number of years, I'm just giving an example, you know, we've been doing the conference for a number of years, and we always use the same signs, whereas this year, we got new signs and new promotional materials. It's a one-time thing, won't happen again. I look at these numbers and I'm, I see overages, but I have no idea why. And so that's what I'm looking for, is a little more detail on, you know, why are these departments, after we gave mid-year budget direction and it still came in over budget? Well, why is that? And what should we be looking at in the future? Or was it just, you know, corp guard, the, a building? Is it an aberration?
Two, two, uh, possible suggestions that might, might be helpful to the council. One is page twelve of the CAFER, gives a, a very high-level, uh, explanation for about four or five of the major, uh, overages. But another suggestion will be with our new system, uh, that we are in the process of implementing now. It may be helpful for the council to see the expenditures and revenues of the department's, uh, budget to actual, so that they can then see the net subsidy and whether that subsidy has changed. In other words, if a department, uh, such as planning or recreation, uh, over expended their expenditure side, but you also saw that revenue had increased proportionally, if not a little bit more, then perhaps that would ameliorate some of the concern that, that expenditures were unexplained, that they were justif, that you could see that they were justified in raising revenues, uh, that more than offset those expenditures. That may be a helpful way to go, and that should, that information should be available, um, in the next few months, I hope. Uh, it's been a long process, but that information will be available monthly.
Okay, well, that's helpful to know for the future. I have one, um, more question on page eighty-two. Uh, I was looking at the actual on, this is the Measure A, uh, funds, and the actual, uh, deficit on Measure A was ninety-five, three, sixteen, and, um, I had thought it was going to be somewhere around seventy-two, and we'd moved general fund monies over to zero that out, so.
We, we have since corrected the, there was, there were two mistakes, uh, on revenue side. Uh, thirty thousand dollars of revenue was credited to the general fund that should not have been credited to the general fund, it should have been credited to, um, uh, Measure A for the SCOOP program, as well as, I believe it was twenty-three, twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, was not, was, occurred in a, a different fiscal year, but belonged to that same, uh, oh-three, oh-four expenditure item. So the net reduction, I believe, Beth, if you can correct me, was, uh, the net deficit was in the forty-six thousand range, um, rather than the ninety-five figure that you see there. But we are providing, staff is providing and doing research now to explain that forty-six, and we'll be coming back to the council.
So you'll give us an update on page eighty-two, essentially?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, it's thirty and thirty-five?
I'm sorry?
Thirty and twenty-five.
Thirty and twenty-three, I thought you said.
How much were the adjustments?
Oh, uh, I believe it was just under thirty and. Twenty? Thirty-nine thousand plus twenty thousand? So a fifty-nine thousand, uh, drop from that, uh, ninety-five thousand deficit.
I believe you got thirty-six.
Okay.
All right.
So we'll wait to hear, get an amendment back from staff on our Measure A.
We, we have to do a, a, a separate financial, set of financial reports for Measure A, and that will be presented to council. Uh, I hope at the next meeting, we're doing research to fully explain that.
All right, well, with that, I'll move a acceptance of this report.
That's 6E?
Uh, that is.
Consent calendar, 6E.
Consent calendar, 6E.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Christine?
Councilmember Grocott?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Teagle, authority?
Yes. F.
Yeah, um.
This has to do with the, uh, award of contract for the Arguello Park Phase One project. And actually, um, I did want to note also that I had received an inquiry from a citizen and gotten a response from staff, and all of you and the citizen who's out in our audience did receive a copy of that response. So.
Thank you. Um, on item F is, uh, just for the public, it's, this is the Arguello Park Phase One project, and it's recommending that, uh, we award a contract to Robert A. Bultham, Inc. of San Jose in the amount of one point four million, um, and allocate an additional one hundred thousand from Fund Twenty-Seven to the project. My question is, on the, uh, the amount, the one point four, it's a little bit over one point four million, but on the one point four, where, where were things, the last time we went through this process and received bids and we rejected them?
Repeat that again, please. Where was what?
Well, we, we received bids before and we rejected them. So where was the amount at that time compared to where we are now?
I'd have to check records, but, um, the budget amount is one point four, five, or whatever. I think it came in at one-six. It was definitely higher, and neither firm was really qualified for the job.
Okay, great. And then, um, on the back page, it, under Budget Impact, it, it, uh, talks about an additional one hundred thousand is required to cover the estimated cost of contingencies and architect services during construction. And then it says staff will perform inspection and contract administration. Is that city staff or who, who is that that's going to do the, uh, inspection and contract administration?
Um, I would have to defer that question to Parvee, who, as you know, at home, still ill. Uh, but it, it's his department, the Public Works Department, that will perform inspection and contract administration.
So I, are we going to do some kind of contract with McTary Engineering? Or are we going to do this, uh, through Don Gilbert and other city staff who are actually employees, or do we not know?
Again, I'll, I would have to get back to the council on that. Uh, I don't know how Public Works would handle that.
Can I, um, is it a safe assumption that if in the staff report says a hundred thousand dollars is required to cover contingencies and architect services, that by, um, allocating the additional hundred thousand dollars, which this resolution asks us to do, we specify that the hundred thousand dollars is for those two items and that it's not for, um, additional staff time or a contract with, I assume your concern is with them?
Yeah, I'm concerned about having a contract with McTary Engineering.
And so that, the, the hundred thousand dollars isn't allocated towards that, because that's not, I mean, clearly, it's a staff, and it doesn't say, you know, an additional contract of twenty thousand dollars is going to be required for oversight on this?
If that's the council's pleasure, yes.
Okay, and I'm seeing our city attorney over there nodding as well that.
Well, from the information in the Stanford Board, um, I think that would be appropriate direction. Uh, it is, it assumes that the con, construction management is not included in the overall billion, uh.
Million and five, actually.
It might be. We don't have that detail.
Well, I'm not ready to move on this until we get clarification myself. I don't know. Now, how much would that hurt to wait two weeks?
Does it hurt? Um, it could, it could incur, uh, some financial penalties with the, uh, contractor that was selected, because you have X amount of days to give them the begin work order. And if you extend beyond that, then there are financial penalties the city would pay.
Okay.
Barry, are you comfortable that whoever does the inspections is going to do that for, uh, not only professionally, but for a, an efficient amount?
Uh, yes, I am.
And it maybe shouldn't matter in my mind.
Okay. Well, Don, would you like to?
And therefore, I would like to move, uh, consent calendar item 6F.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Um, Christine, call the question, please.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
And Mayor Teagle, authority?
Yes. Okay, last one. Six I, which is authorizing the issuance of a request for proposal for professional auditing services.
Okay, um, on this one, I have just the question on, uh, no, I have two questions. One is, uh, and by the way, just so folks understand, this is to essentially do the same, Richard, do you have that report?
I'm sorry?
Mine's all bound up.
Yes.
Thank you, Inga. What we're talking about is a contract to, uh, have somebody do these auditing reports.
That's correct.
Right? And in the past, we did a contract that was five years, but it was delineated that it would be a three-year contract with two one-year options.
That's, that's correct.
Correct? And now what we're looking at is something similar, but not the same. We're looking at the contract period for this engagement to be three years with an option to extend for two years thereafter. So it's a little different, and I just wanted to, is that what we intended? Do we want to do the same as we did in the past, or are we changing this thing? And if so, why? And if so, why?
The process that we went through last time was-- how do I say it? It was somewhat contentious, in that there was a differing view on who we should award to and for how long. And so...
Excuse me, contention with whom?
Contention within the group that was reviewing the-- and interviewing the finalists for audit services, the firms. And we went with a three-year agreement with two one-year extensions. We exercised one of those one-year extensions, and rather than go back and ask the council for a second extension, we thought it best to do the RFP. We did not feel-- actually, my own preference would be that it'd be a five-year agreement rather than a three-year. But three years is a shorter time span, and councilly expressed some concern that we might get too far out of the market, and we wanted a fresh look or a more recent competitive bid. I think that if we got to the end of that two, three-year period, and we looked at the market and evaluated what others had done, then we could better determine whether it's worth going back out on a competitive bid, or whether we're within market, and we will be within market for the next two years. So rather than go through a full review and council consideration and council approval for that second year, we're recommending that it be a two-step process. Award for three years, and then award for-- award an extension for two years, if that is staff's recommendation, is to award for two years. I just don't feel like there's enough gain by renewing two different times.
Actually, remember, when we had this item three or four years ago, brought the issue that, in my view, was-- I thought changing even at five years was inappropriate. But you said GASB 34 required now these...
Actually, it's not GASB 34. It's more, as opposed to the private sector, the public sector does change auditors. Sometimes agencies don't for many years, and we didn't for about 10 years. We had the same auditor. My belief is that we should get a fresh set of eyes, looking at least every 10 years, and not go beyond that. Because my own experience in other public agencies is when you have an auditor for a long time, you don't get the comments back. You don't get the scrutiny that you need. When you change firms, we changed firms in another agency and had 27 comments. 27 comments is a whole lot, when we had zero for at least five or 10 years before that. So I think it's worth getting that fresh set, fresh perspective. There's so many changes with GASB, not just 34, but many other changes, that we need up-to-date, professional firm, looking at our books and looking at our process, and making sure that we have the internal controls in place.
On this question, if you don't mind, I notice our city treasurer is in the audience. If he would like to weigh in on this, I'd like to hear from him.
I'm Michael Galvin, the city treasurer. I concur with Richard. It really comes down, boils down to a comfort level. You're looking at three years, and we have a fairly good feeling on how the auditors work with the staff and their product. It's more of a quality control review of the product. And if, in fact, conditions exist and we're satisfied, it's very comfortable to continue for two additional years. Instead of, as Richard indicated, if we went with the traditional method, we had to come back for-- to council for approval each year. And also, it tends to make the auditors kind of uneasy, and quite possibly get less senior auditors and a less quality work, when there's an uncertainty of how much time is going to extend. So, the end result is, you know, I'm quite comfortable with this, and as Richard said, you really need to hold that three years as a carrot to the various CPA firms to ensure quality. And as he indicated, the number of exceptions or potential exceptions that need to be reviewed is very helpful.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple more questions here. On page four of the report, it says that the RGS and LGS executive director contracts with the City of San Carlos and South Bay Side Waste Management Authority to serve as the finance director. And I'm not sure the way that's worded, it makes it sound as though it personally contracts with. And I think what it means, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is that RGS and LGS as entities contract with these authorities. And we may want to clean up that language before we make this a final draft.
You are correct. We are contracting between agencies and not individuals.
Okay, so we might want to take a look at that sentence and straighten it out. And then, the last question I have is, it mentions right underneath that, in the next paragraph, the financial activities of these entities are included in the scope of the audit. And it's speaking of South Bay Side Waste Management Authority and CCAG. And is there another one in here? I think that's just-- that's it. And my question is, I can understand why we want to know what they're doing with their finances, because we're partners with them, if you will. But I don't understand, it seems to me it's an expense to do this work, so why are we paying for an audit of these other agencies? Don't they do their own audits? Or maybe it's just a sort of a review of an audit that's done by-- that they have done, in which case I don't have a problem with it. But if we're spending a lot of time auditing them or looking at their books, I can understand, again, wanting to know that they're financially stable and so forth, but, you know, why should we pay for that?
That's probably another example where we need to clean up the language a little bit, because the intent there is to say that we provide the financial services and therefore have our auditors audit those books as well, but those entities pay for their own audits.
They are not our partner. They are not our partner.
How would you like to put that?
We provide service to-- I can only speak to CCAG.
Yeah.
And we provide a service, and that auditing bill is scrutinized rather assiduously by other cities. And I, as past chairman and possible current chairman, I'm saying, you guys do it at a price you think is better. We do not pay-- San Carlos does not pay a nickel for this. They pass its costs on through to the CCAG, and I believe South Bay Management Waste has got the same system. And we've had numerous volunteer cities saying, "We can do it cheaper. Do it." And they always come back to the same agency, so...
Right.
Okay, so you're saying we need to clean up the language, because our nickel doesn't pay for these audits?
It does not.
But it's within the scope of services.
And I want to make it clear, there's no partnership involved here. It's just a service we provide, and we're reimbursed.
But just to be clear, it is under the scope of services of this RFP. However, it may be broken out, the costs may need to be broken out as pass-through costs.
We ask the auditors to break out the costs, both in their proposals as well as when they submit their bills. They break that cost out between the entities, so that each entity is charged for its services.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification. With that, I would move approval of item...
6I.
6I.
It's been moved and seconded. Christine?
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Mayor Teagle-Doordie?
Yes. Okay. Next item on our agenda tonight is one of my least favorite. It's authorizing the 2004, 2005 mid-year budget adjustments. And we did have a brief staff report with options to look at cutting $450,000, as well as potentially an option for additional $96,000. Richard, are you going to do the brief staff report on this? Okay, thank you.
I will do my best to make it brief.
Just smile when you're giving us the bad news.
Well, actually, it's better than I would have thought a couple of months ago, considerably better. And so I'll get into a little bit of why it's better, and-- but why we're still recommending the reduction options that you see before you tonight. Property tax revenue is up for obvious reasons. The price and the turnover is still high. The ERAF refund, which you know about, is one-time. It is our second year of it, but we cannot count on that as an ongoing revenue source. VLF, through the adjustments that were mentioned earlier, with their converting that into property tax effectively, but we do expect a $100,000 increase on that budget. And plant-- I mean, building and plan check revenues are running ahead of schedule, and real property transfers, again, driven by the turnover in residential properties, is up $75,000. I want everyone to remember that $847,000 number, because it's going to come back in just a moment. The-- on the expenditure side, at this point, we're not recommending anything other than the ERAF III adjustment that was approved by the voters with 1A back in November, $454,000 this year and the following year. The-- if you look at the revenue increases that we're projecting and the expenditure decrease for ERAF III, we're up almost $400,000 over what we had budgeted. What we had budgeted, though, showed that our fund balance target of $2 million would not be achieved by the end of the second year of this two-year budget. We would only be at $100,000. The average savings range anywhere from $800,000 to $1 million a year. So you would think that we could achieve those savings in the next two-- over the next two-year cycle. And I think that our revenue increase of $847,000 shows that that average estimate of $800,000 to $1 million net savings per year is not an unrealistic number at all, although it's getting more and more difficult as the squeeze on revenues and expenditures extends and as we continue to cut the budget. And then the ERAF impact, $908,000 in the next two years. So, normal savings could get us there. If nothing else changed, and we didn't have the ERAF, we could get at the $2 million target range by the end of '06, fiscal year '06. But we know that we've got $900,000 worth of state cuts. And so, the-- there's an uphill climb there, that we would be counting on the economy to pull us out. And at this point, we don't feel comfortable in projecting those revenues to increase by that much, along with the fact that we have reserves to restore when the council appropriated for the adjustment or the median cuts for El Camino. We have capital budgets to do that we have had to cut back on, because the funding just simply wasn't there over the last few years. So, why we're suggesting the 450 reduction options at this time, even though the picture looks fine for this year, is it will not look fine by the time we get to June 30, '06. Rather than cut that too close and then count on the economy to turn around dramatically, we are recommending this time that the council approve reduction options totaling $450,000. The specifics are in the staff report. We're also recommending that the council direct staff to prepare longer-term, ongoing restructuring of $450,000 cuts for '06. And we're asking that council consider using up to $900,000 of the reserve for economic uncertainties, should we not be able to achieve the revenue growth that we hope for and the expenditure reductions that we hope for in the next two years. I won't repeat the-- all the options that you have before you, but there are 19 or so on the recommended list, and several that I've amended since you got the report for clarification and for new information that we've gotten, that I'll have highlighted in just a moment. The first being, the Planning Director's Hours was on the original list as an additional option beyond the $450,000. We had combined that with the planning net revenue increase of-- we brought that $17,500 from the optional list back up to the $12,000 that we had for the planning net revenues, and just rounded it up to $30,000 that we expect the net benefit from the planning department. On the police PST position, we had misstated that, and the correct statement would be converting that full-time PST to a part-time position. That, we should save $40,000 for the remainder of this fiscal year, and that-- a lot of that savings is because we hired that person late in the fiscal year, in November.
So it's still 40?
I'm sorry?
Is it 40?
40,000. 40,000 remains a good number. I'm just restating that it was a conversion from full-time to part-time. And it is a filled position at this point. It is not, as I stated in the staff report, an unfilled position.
Was that person hired under the understanding that it would be a full-time position?
Yes, they were.
Okay.
And then the last change from what you have in your general report is the county-wide administrative reductions. I said county-wide, excuse me. Citywide administrative reductions. I lowered that by the amount that we increased the planning departments. And the reason I lowered that, rather than going over on the 450, is because the $62,000 that was originally there, I felt was going to be a stretch. Those are oftentimes, like office supplies, just normal operating expenditures. I would feel more comfortable by taking these structural changes that you have before you, rather than cutting the wherewithal of the departments to do normal business operations. And then we have the one change in the additional options for council consideration, should the council so choose. This is a replacement of the Planning Director's Hours. Once we moved that up to the recommended options, we moved that $17,500 down to the additional options.
Thank you, Richard. Are there questions for staff?
So, you moved from-- I'm looking at the page six, our staff report, Richard. But you called-- you linked the planning budget and the Planning Director's Hours together, the 12 and the 17, 5, and rounded them up to 40.
30,000.
I'm sorry, 30. And then you substituted the admin for the replacement of the Planning Director's Hours as an option, should we want to flip-flop something?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the part-time, that's 11, the delayed hiring of the PST position to part-time is filled, right?
That's correct.
So you took the 40 out of that?
That number stays the same.
Right.
$40,000, we estimate savings, and we would implement that as soon as practical. But it would be, if that position were to be converted to...
By not filling another position?
I'm sorry?
By not filling another position?
No, that we would convert that position to a part-time position.
Okay.
So we'd have additional savings. We've saved most of that $40,000 already, just because we filled a position five months into the year. And then we would save an additional amount, up to that $40,000, by converting to a part-time.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Interested time, then? Would you want us-- Richard, you just want us to comment on items 1 through 19, or substitute them with the six below, or the now recently modified additional options?
That-- the preference would be that the council approve the recommended list as amended tonight.
Okay.
However, the options, the additional options are for council substitution, as you noted.
Well, rather than go through these line item by line item, does anyone have any issue with any of these? And let's take them. Tom, which ones do you have an issue with?
I have an issue with a concept of-- I think it's a well-done list, and everyone's taking a bit of it and doing their part. But we are looking two years ahead. We're looking at the Economic Contingency Fund as a balancing factor. We're trying to reach it. We've got a whole lot of unknowns in front of us. And I think, for the most part, we need to do this. But I really hate to rupture public programs, or public programs, or programs that have high public value in the process of anticipating the worst. So I would suggest we take a look at number one, restore it. It's only $3,500, and allows us to do a better job with WIC of the Family and the youth jobs. That we restore number two, $10,000. We spent a ton of money... We spend a ton of money on, on our internet and our video productions, and we've gotten the public into the program. I don't think we ought to rupture that at this point. I think we ought to continue with number 20, is code enforcement.
20?
20, there is no 20.
20, there's no 20.
I'm sorry.
Oh, number one.
Number 20 is code enforcement for the city attorney.
Sorry, that's number one under the additional options.
Okay.
If we're looking at the summary list.
I think we ought to maintain that. We have enough problems with, with abatements. We have sidewalk problems. We have abandoned car problems. We got, you name it. And I don't think that we, we should put the face out there for our public that these are of limited concern to us and we'll get around to it when we can. And then a final one that I've kind of got mixed emotions on is number 24. We all know what value the concert of the park has. We've been talking for a number of years about doing the stage. I don't think we need to budget $20,000 for the stage, but I think we need to budget excess funds from the function to the stage, so that as money is developed and raised as a part of the, of the sponsorship programs, that that money can be set aside and impounded, if you will, so that over time, perhaps a few years, there's enough money in there. We also have a belief that there are people out there that are willing to contribute to this, this process because of the value to, to the community. So, I would suggest those high-profile public issues be, be reconsidered.
Okay. Matt?
Before we leave that, so, may I get this straight, how we're, how we're doing this? The, the optional ones aren't in there, Tom. The 1 through 6, I'm looking at the last page.
Not unless we approve them.
So what you've thought on, what-
So, I mean, what, what staff's recommending is 1 through 19. And so you're, the first two, the $3,500 and the $10,000 are in Richard's budget, but the $20,000 for the, for the stage and the $3,500 for the attorney's code enforcement are future.
So, as long as we continue then-
We need to come up with the 450, and I suggest that if, if, so the two you pointed out, we got to find another 13, 5 someplace. That's what I think Richard's-
Or, or trust the process. We're, we're looking at a balancing function downstream. I don't know that we have to be right on dollar.
So, just for clarification, so Tom, you would be in favor with the exceptions of the ones you pointed out, looking at the reductions, including the additional options for net savings, which actually may get us to more than $450,000?
Yes, I have no objection to moving ahead with the additional options, other than number one and number two.
Right, exactly. Okay.
Number one and one of-
Number one and five down here.
One and five down here.
Yeah. Okay, so Matt, did you have any?
Yeah, I did. In fact, I have a question first. On the item 10, I'm on the same table on page six. Do not fill two vacant public safety positions until 7:06. I'm, I'm going back to this report we received, this one, Sandra, that says, police patrol, we were over budget. And I'm wondering, how much, if we're $194,500 over budget, how much of that is overtime? Because if we're not going to, seems to me that, and my question is, you know, if we don't fill that position, then it, the onus is on officers to work overtime. So how much of this $194,000 is overtime? Are we cutting off our noses to spite our faces?
Chief, do you want to respond to that?
I'll comment in general on the overtime. We don't have, I don't have the overtime numbers for, excuse me, for that year. But what's in the report and what's included is if we do reduce staffing, there does, the possibility does exist that we could incur an increase of overtime by reducing staffing levels. And there could be uncertainty associated with that. If we have an injury on patrol or a protracted illness on patrol, those could drive overtime costs. If we cut staffing and don't incur those things, we may not have the overtime costs going up. But I think it's outlined in the report that with reduction in staffing, we could incur, increase overtime costs.
Matt, you're assuming that the 194, 501 from last year's budget is all overtime?
No, I'm not assuming that. I asked the question.
Okay. But my suspicion is it's retirement benefits, would be my guess. Well, I mean, there, there's a, you know, all we see is expenditures versus revenue. It could be-
We have no explanation. That's why I asked the question. So I guess, just in terms of priority, I don't know, to me, our job as a city, job one is public safety. And I'm not for holding back hiring police officers if that's what we need. I suppose I would offer a compromise that maybe we save 61, 5 and hire one and not hire the other. But, and, and I, the way I looked at this, think of it as that we're, we're kind of horse trading. If, if we're going to take something up here-
Right.
And fund it, then we need to find something down here to pay for it. And, and my answer was to, let's, let's fund these police officers and, and then take all these options down here. Or compromise and fund one, at least one police officer. And actually, that is such an expensive item, it's $123,000. We might do one and not the other and still have to do these down here. And then the, the only other one that I had a, a struggle with was reducing professional engineering hours, because that slows up projects. And that, to me, hurts us in the long run, because if you slow up projects, then, you know, generally what, what this is about is somebody brings in a set of plans and they want to rehab a building or, or something like that in town to put in a business or whatever, as soon as they do that, that thing goes online as new, new property tax assessment. So the, if we slow up that process, we also slow up the, the opportunity for that money to come in the door, for businesses to be there, for sales tax, for a lot of other things. So I, I didn't care for that one too much.
Well, can we clear, is professional engineering for public works or for building?
Public works.
Oh, is it for public works?
Yes.
Oh, well, then I retract my statement. Sorry.
Okay.
So you're only on for 61, huh?
61, 5.
61, 5. Yeah, as a compromise, sure.
Don?
My comments are very much along the lines of Tom's in terms of trying to figure out perspective here, what we as a city council try to do when we budget monies, how we try to benefit the citizens, how we try to provide programs, how we try to make our government work more efficiently. In the case of the ones that Tom noted, those are the ones that I was going to note also, where we've got, in terms of items 1 through 19 anyway, we've got 13, 5. My, my suggestion would be that items, between items 11, 13, 14, 15, and 16, there's about $140,000 worth of, of monies that we're saving by delaying for a period of time. It seems to me that an additional month delay for any one of them, or a couple weeks delay, you could mix all that up, and that more than pays the 13, 5. And that's a fairly easy thing to do, since you're delaying the hiring of somebody anyway and somebody else is making do for a period of a month or two or three, or whatever that period is, they can certainly make do for another week or two or three.
So you want to-
So you're talking about delaying, my assumption is for 13 through 16 is talking about delaying the hiring of staff specifically within our Parks and Recs Department. That would be delaying it through the end of this fiscal year? So that the positions would come open again come July 1 of 2005?
What I'm saying is, I don't care where it comes from.
And what you're saying is, keep it open or delay it through the beginning of August 1st?
Let the chips fall where they may, because if you give somebody a starting date of June 1, you say, well, potentially you plan on, all right, maybe, maybe we're going to get a starting date of July 1. What, what's the difference really, so to speak?
Oh, okay. So you think you can pick up the extra 13, 5?
I'm saying, delay any one thing, or, I mean, maybe, maybe just somebody says, well, gee, I can't, you planned on them starting June 1, but guess what? They can't start till June, June 15 anyway. Well, fine, roll that into the budget. You're probably going to save that much to cover what Tom suggested that I would say.
Well, you know, property taxes will probably go up too, by that amount. Property taxes, we could probably slide on the 13, 5.
Never know.
The savings numbers that you see outside 11 through 15, 11 through 16 are through the end of the year. So that assumes the position stays vacant through the end of the-
Through the end of the fiscal, fiscal year.
Yeah, June 30.
June 30.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So how much, 13?
No, he's, he's suggesting eliminating 1 and 2, 13, 5, from the top, correct?
Yes, I'm saying eliminate 1 and 2 from the cut list.
Do you have any feeling about the public safety position, restoring one of those in, in anticipation of taking advantage of the additional options that we were offered for net savings?
Let me think about it a minute.
Okay. Mike?
Well, I, I'm for 1 through 19, but, but a couple of, well, I'm sorry, I take it back. Not because Richard's making a presentation, I don't see that we cut back on finance at this stage with the changes to Gatsby and some of the finance issues that we have and the current problems that we're having with the new system. To have you cut back your hours bothers me.
The new computer system.
The new computer system. For, for the record, we haven't seen reports for, you know, months, and, and all, the first thing I saw was we're knocking off $12,000 because we want to cut your hours back. We may never get a financial statement this year. Not rhetorical.
The areas that I would propose cutting back are the leadership positions that the staff has taken in, for instance, California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. I've been on their board for the last year. That requires some time. I'm the city representative in the organization, the lead city representative. I've taken myself off the board as of last week. So that frees up some time.
Okay, when you answered, you answered the second one I had was 8 and, and Tom's calling 23, or the, you linked a planning director and a planning budget revenues. I thought at the last budgetary meeting, we talked about raising these revenues to cover the cost. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I mean, it should be break even. I mean, so there shouldn't be any allocated, these are revenue increases, not cost increases.
These are-
Cost decreases.
These are net revenue increases.
Right.
So we will have some expenditure, we may have some expenditure increases as we-
Right.
Provide services, but they will at least generate-
Which leads me to my, the next one, which was really down, is, in the option 1 is actually directed at the city attorney. Can we not bill those enforcement hours that, that the, for code enforcements to the stucky?
To the violator?
For the violator?
That's better, the violator. We do, as a matter of fact.
Well, then, there wouldn't be.
In each instance where, mostly in instances where we take first court, someone who hasn't complied with the 15 letters from the building department or the one or two letters that are sent out from our office before we, but if it is resolved after one letter from our office, they go back to the building department and decide they'd rather do it that way than go through our office, I don't believe those will bill at that point.
See, I'm with Tom on that. I'd rather see the enforcement, you know, continue, so we don't get behind, but, but just add those to the bill to the, to the, to the violator. I mean, in fact, I thought that's the way we talked about it at the last meeting. Same issue with the planning department, where we said if, if an additional project comes in, we're going to bill that. You know, we're not in it to make money, we're in it to cover the cost of the additional either planning or legal services provided.
If, if I could, through the mayor, there, there's the issue of the citywide fee study that will be conducted, that the council acted on at their last meeting, I believe. And that could be something that we could perhaps look at, is, what we are looking at very comprehensively is complete cost recovery. And perhaps the city attorney's time could be considered in that as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Then two other ones, 13, delay hiring volunteer coordinator. It's nice to have, I mean, I think we should just drop it completely. It's nice to have, if there's volunteer coordinator, it's a nice luxury, but volunteer coordinator of what? Oh, parking rec, huh?
Keep in mind, volunteers are free bodies, doing things that otherwise paid staff may have to do.
Not, not what we're saying, delay hiring when you're hiring a volunteer, that's why it's kind of oxymoron.
We have in the budget hiring a volunteer coordinator to facilitate all the coordinators that are used by the city. And the city uses a lot of volunteers, specifically, primarily, in parks and recreation. I know police also uses them, but they are, are using other departments also. Also, we use this, much like Week of the Family, we facilitate for the community, particularly community service hours for the children in the schools, as well as senior citizens who want to volunteer to stay independent, stay active in the community. And then, like anything, it takes time to coordinate all those and follow up. Currently, we have Mr. Pat Leeper, who is a volunteer, volunteer coordinator. He doesn't get paid, but he only works about four hours a week. So he's been able to set up infrastructure, but there's not enough time to follow up like a two-volunteer coordinator would be. We believe that once the economy improves and we are able to fund this position, that we will leverage the dollars spent on that position to bring additional resources to, to San Carlos in the form of volunteer hours.
And this is probably a line item that we could be looking at when the next full budget comes to us for consideration. But at this point, the recommendation is to delay the hiring of this position, should we choose to have it-
Yeah, what I was just saying, we just, you know, we don't do it until it justifies, that's, forget just delaying. I mean, just, sorry, we have to make tough decisions, but just, to me, it just didn't make sense that we're hiring a volunteer coordinator.
I've got two other comments, Madam Mayor. One is on, I'll call it item 2 in the second list, where we talked about, or it's proposed that potentially building fees could be increased to cover full costs. That should have been done anyway, it seems to me. If those are truly passed, there's, it seems to be like it's more a matter of timing than anything else.
Actually, I, I disagree, because I, I remember at the meeting that we had, building came in and said some of the fees were actually lower than the cost of providing services because we wanted to incent the public to get the permits for, it seems to me like water heater replacements. The cost of providing the services actually is much higher than, than the actual fee that we're charging. And again, it's, it's because we, we, we don't want to make it prohibitively expensive for people to get the permits, because then they do it illegally or they do it without permits. And then we have public-
I've had my memory refreshed.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. The second one was, we could probably save $4,000 just by delaying the replacement of the floor in the community rooms upstairs. I mean, last time I was up there, I mean, they may have some spots on them, but I think they're serviceable carpets still, probably.
Were you talking about the library?
The flooring in the library, community rooms, number six.
So that's 15 grand right there, for nickel and diamond.
Well, he's recommending that we use all of these. We go for the 450?
The 450, and then the 96 is additional on top of that, is what I was, I was saying.
Correct, correct.
We're horse trading.
Yeah, we're horse trading.
To give us options.
Right. And what, the way I'm looking at it, this is I added the two together, 596, and if we've all got, I got Tom down for 37 and Matt for 61 and you for 13, you know, how do we get, he wants us to walk away with 450, right?
Right.
That's correct.
That's Matt's horse trading, and I agree with him.
That's correct. It doesn't have to be 450, but somewhere close to that.
Yeah.
Or more would be okay.
Where do you have us now, Mike?
Or less would be able to.
Well, I don't know, I, I-
Well, Mike, did you have other things that you want to, because I'll-
Well, 17, 5, I, I'm assuming was, is in, but I'm just saying, we ought to, it ought to end permanently till it justifies its place. I mean, these delay hiring of, of some of these positions. And a kind of the final one I had was the CSO position, delay hiring of one CSO position currently vacant, it's just that we, we leave it open until, you know, until there is a justifiable need. I don't think there is, and I'm looking at the chief and Sandra down there, is that, we delay these things, but to me, you have to have a justifiable reason to bring them in. Delaying it, this is just to fiscal year-end, June 30, right, Richard?
Yes.
And I'm saying, we could, we could get the savings. So I'm, I'm for all of them, 450 and the 96, and then we subtract what everybody's little pet, little project is here, but I-
Yeah. Okay. Well, let me, let me just-
Could I make an observation on where we started this meeting with our $50,000 vision program? Is that something we really need to do now, and would that be an offset for what we're seeing on the board? In other words, is that in the budget, and is that something that could come off of the budget if we chose to do so?
We do not have, currently, we do not have an appropriation for that full amount. No.
And we probably don't have an appropriation for the city manager's recruitment either.
We do, I believe, have, have that sufficiently budgeted in the charter.
It is, it is covered in the budget. Okay.
So it's not in the budget and we don't have a source of funds at this point for the visioning program?
Not all of it. We, we have identified some funding sources from various places. We cobbled together, but we do not have the full amount yet.
Well, can I weigh in? I mean, I'm, I'm with Tom and Don. I think we should keep in the Week of the Family and the video productions, our line items 1 and 2. I think that's $13,500, probably well-spent in connecting and building community. In terms of the number 11, actually, number 10, the two vacant public safety positions, I actually would love to continue to see this deferred with direction to the chief that you continue to monitor overtime. And if the overtime hours start to become excessive, or someone goes out, is injured or is sick, that it gets brought back. And in the meantime, we've been able to sort of rack up those savings. Because I think, I think the chief's, he is new on board, but I think he- on board, but I think he's, you know, he's probably got the wherewithal to track overtime and obviously to manage his staff. And if the recommendation came from their staff to essentially delay these two public safety positions, I think he probably also, if it was needed, come back to this council and say, you know what, we need to revisit this because of these reasons.
Now, remember that with police officers, there's a lead time because they've got to go through training. And before you actually get them out on the street.
Right.
There's, I forget what, you know, there's a few months of lead time there.
Right, right. The number.
So you want to eliminate both?
I would, I would keep both of them, the $123,000 on the, on the same cut, just to leave it out there as an available option to cut. On 11, which is converting a full-time public safety, I don't know, PST, what's a PST?
Police services technician.
Police service technician. It's a part-time. I feel like, you know, if we've hired somebody under the intention of them being a full-time position and then you turn around a month later, however long later, and you say, guess what, the council's just cut you to part-time. First of all, the $40,000, the majority of that money's already been saved because of the delay in hiring of that position. So the additional savings may be, what, $10,000, $15,000?
Somewhere in that range.
And so I think just from an employee morale standpoint, I'd rather keep that person at full-time because they may be actually able to help cover with some of the public safety positions that we're leaving open. And then I agree that the city attorney code enforcement hours, we should get those entirely passed through if possible. I think we should continue to delay the hiring. But I think in terms of the stage and the flooring, rather than deleting those, I think we should defer them. I mean, we've been very successful, I think, in terms of conservative fiscal management by deferring projects until there's money that's made available. And I think by deferring them, they stay on the list of desirable things to have done, but we haven't cut them altogether. Because if there's extra money at the end of the year or when we go through this next year's budget cycle, if Parks and Rec still thinks that those are priorities in order to either raise revenue because we can rent those rooms at a higher price, or we can, you know, somehow get some money to offset the concert in the park stage, I think that would be wonderful. But I'm in favor of deferring rather than deleting projects. So I would.
For the full fiscal year? In order to get the benefit.
The remainder of the fiscal year.
Yeah, for the remainder of the fiscal year. Well, I mean, it's, it's not the remainder of the fiscal year. It's, we're, you know, it's a capital type of improvement or a capital expenditure. So if you buy a new stage, it's $20,000, whether you do it in this fiscal year or next fiscal year. And we've deferred quite a few capital projects, including, you know, new microphones and things for this chamber to try to improve communication. So this council has a history of deferring capital improvements until the money, the financial picture looks a little bit better. So those would be my, my comments.
I'm going to chip in again on the police because the thing I've noticed, reading the papers, and this is just, you know, I don't have any statistics for this or anything like that, but I have seen a plethora of stories about people driving around in cars and scoping out houses where people aren't home and trying to break in or breaking into automobiles or breaking into businesses. We're seeing more and more of this on the peninsula and up and down the cities on the peninsula. And that concerns me. And again, I'm going to come back and say, you know, the things, when I look at what a city does and what a government does, the things that you do without, that aren't luxuries are police, fire, and keeping up your infrastructure. And everything beyond that, including the fine job that Barry does with Parks and Recs, you know, we all love to go to the parks and so forth, but it's all icing on the cake.
Eating potatoes, right.
And so I'm really concerned about holding off on these.
So you want one, is that your so?
I would at least like one because I would, I would pick up on what Don said. It takes time to train. It takes time to hire and find these personnel. And so at least I'd like, like to have one.
Well, Richard, or Madam Mayor, can I suggest that?
Yeah, absolutely.
We use 546 as our number. That's the 450 and the 96.
Okay.
And then we had this sort of unanimity to keep one and two in there.
So 13.5.
13.5. Any other, and Tom wanted the, you wanted the stage, huh?
Well, I'd like to, I'll be willing to delay it. I don't think we ought to delete it.
Okay.
And I, and I would encourage Barry to look for alternatives in terms of funding it.
But we talked about the 3,500, which is the city attorney code enforcement, keeping that in.
Well, that's in there. It's in.
No, but you've got to subtract it out.
No, it's in. I'm saying take, if you take 450 and 96, you get to 546.
No, I understand, but.
Start subtracting.
But we said that we wanted to keep the city attorney's code enforcement hours.
But he was going to pass them on in the form of, just like we did the planning.
If he could.
If he could.
Sometimes he can't.
Okay. All right. So we take it out. That's 17.
17. And.
I'm kind of with Matt. I'd, maybe like, I mean, Sandra and Greg are both here. Is there any kind of, can you give us kind of feedback on staffing for, you know, the impact that this delay of hiring a.
Greg, you'll have to come up to the microphone so people can hear.
I'm sorry, you wanted to know what the impact would be of the delay of hiring the two officers?
Well, in that sense, you know, we're talking about delaying, not filling two vacancies.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'd say this, that if we decided to move forward with filling one of those vacancies, the earliest that that could occur, given the process of recruitment, interviewing, chief's interview, background investigation, the potential of a candidate washout and have to bring back another candidate, looks like around June 1st. So we would still realize a good portion of those savings if we ramped up. So I want to say that about that, about the figure. You know, it's hard to say about what the impact of that will be. One of the, one of the things that we are certain of is it certainly can decrease flexibility in the police department if we do have sicknesses, injuries, or shortage because we have less bodies to pull from. But I will say that the staff during the budget process reviewed the workload situation of the police department thoroughly, discussed it at staff, and discussed what we felt would be the best options to bring forward and to contribute to, to the budget process. And we felt while it's never optimal to reduce police officers, that we could in fact be able to do that, you know, and, and that was the recommendation that we felt was best, given the economics.
Chief, can I ask a following question, which is converting this full-time PST position to a part-time? Do you have any feeling about that?
I think you were right when you said that the majority of those savings have been realized already and that if we don't, the vast majority of them. And so if we don't convert, I don't think that we'll, we'll be having to add back the entire $40,000. Again, it's a similar process. You know, the, the city's facing a shortfall. As you know, the police department is a big user of general fund revenues and we had to, and so there has to be some, some cuts and some things brought forward. Staff reviewed them all and felt that that was the most palatable of the suggestions because we've been through rounds of cut before. We've cut the operational expenses and we're getting lean and we're getting into personnel issues. So I guess that's a long way of saying that you were accurate in your assessment about realization of the savings, most of them having been incurred already.
So if we didn't convert this PST, the, the savings is already there, but the actual net difference would be more like $10,000?
I agree with that. I think that's probably about right.
Okay. And with this PST position, can they do backfill some of the other two positions that are, that are open at this point, more than, for example, a CSO?
PSTs are generally doing more than CSOs or different duties and different tasks than CSOs.
Right.
So whether or not we've really fully looked at shifting their responsibilities to pick up some of the CSO work, I'm not sure. The pay grades are different. The expertise of a PST is higher than a CSO.
Well, actually, I meant for the public safety positions that you have open. So for example, those two positions that you have open at a savings of $123,000, by keeping a PST at full-time rather than part-time, are you able to shift some of the administrative types of duties or paperwork or anything like that over?
Yes, that is the purpose of a PST and a CSO, is to be able to take what are administrative or lower level tasks that are commonly done by sworn officers making more money and shift those to non-s sworn personnel making less money. So as long as we have those types of non-s sworn personnel on staff, they're able to do some of those duties.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So I, as you were asking those questions, I put some figures together. And it seems to me, by what the chief said, we're not going to save $40,000 anyways. Maybe we save 20.
30. They've already been saved.
So it's already been saved. But instead of taking the 40 out of here, I took just 20 is what I'm saying. So anyways, I took that and I took the 61.5, which is one officer, and the 13.5 from the top here. And you end up with about 93.5. You subtract that from Mike's 546. You've got 452, 500. We're real close to where we want to be. And adding to the chief's comment that even if he starts the process, you're not going to have an officer in place until sometime after the end of the budget year anyway. So you're going to have, see even a little bit more savings. Seems to me we'd be about where we want to be.
Even if you go ahead and hire somebody right now and start that process.
Yeah, start the process.
You've got the salary of one month's worth of one officer.
Well, we've just taken half.
Well, actually, no, if you look, it says, it's delaying it until 706, 2006, not 2005. So this is essentially delaying two officers for an entire calendar year.
18 months.
Of '05.
I'm sorry, I didn't pick that up. You're right.
Plus.
I'd like to weigh in and I'd like.
Wait, hold on. Richard's coming. Is that a typo?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I didn't hear all the question.
Is the number 10, which is not filling the two vacant public safety positions until July of 2006, the correct date?
No.
Should be 2005.
2005.
Okay.
Okay. Then my comment stands. At least saving a month.
Okay, but I still think.
123 is basically almost already saved because even if you went out to start recruiting tomorrow, then it's, it sounds like the lead time is almost as bad as a city manager.
About the same.
Okay.
But one thing I would like to mention though.
I'm sure he resents the.
One thing I would like to mention with respect to going forward with that recruitment is it would then not necessarily negate that as an option for budget cutting for next fiscal year, but it would certainly be difficult to ramp up and hire and then have to reconsider and lay off a public safety officer. So I would just lay that out there for consideration. It will reduce flexibility in terms of what we can do with the police department next fiscal year without having to hire someone and then turn around and lay that same person off if, if a policy decision was made by the council to do that next year.
I guess just to add on to the chief's comments, I think all of these, we have to think about the fact that the finance director is recommending that we come back to you in June with another $450,000 worth of cuts on top of this. Now, we're hoping that through potential retirements and reorganizations at the city that we'll be able to cover some of that next 450 through that process. But I think Greg's point is well taken. You know, you may see some of these options again. So you need to proceed with that in mind.
Okay, so the objective here, Madam Mayor, is 450. And I think, I got 451, Matt, so we're both, if you take Tom's top two hit parades, one and two, leave half of 10 in there, the public safety, just take one vacant position. And I use the same thing, I use the net of 20,000 for, for item 11. You still get 451,000.
Well, no, actually, if you take the 40,000, 30,000 of the 40,000 has already been saved. So you're actually looking at bumping it only 10, leaving the 40 in, but getting an increase of 10. I just, I just would ask my council members, it seems to me that the chief is, is arguing fairly strongly for deferring these two positions until June, when he might have a better idea. It's, it's his department. I would say that if something's going to change between now and June, when it comes back to us in June, that those positions will be recommended to be filled. And I think that we may look at other broader areas where we might be able to find cuts, perhaps in, you know, God forbid, Parks and Rec or, you know, some other type of overhead at that point. But if the, if the chief's sitting here saying he'd rather not have those in, it seems like, you know, maybe we ought to at least give him the benefit of the doubt through June, let him get a better sense of what his department can do and how many people he actually needs filled, and then look at it in our next fiscal years in the full budget.
Madam Mayor, if I might add a comment on to what the assistant city manager said. As far as the timing, I think that June might be a little optimistic. My, my hope and the recommendation in this report is that you direct us to save, develop plans for $450,000. But I think that some of those plans, because we want them to be structural, ongoing plans, I think that we will need to complete the fiscal year and come back either in the fall or mid-year process to, to confirm what we have for the council in terms of plans for restructuring, reorganizing based on retirements, resignations.
Okay.
And I would like to comment on that. I know the chief is deferring to us in a way that surprises me, actually. And that's, but it's fine. I'm simply saying, I don't want to shut him down. If he, he, he is deferring to us and he's saying, yeah, I could wait till June and I could start it then. I don't want to shut him down, though. If, if in the meantime, between, you know, because we have, before we even get to 705, we've got, where are we now, February?
We're not going to see this in June. We're not, Rich, you're just saying, we may.
Well, no, Mike, I'm saying between, between now and 705, if we're saying to him tonight, don't even think about it until after 705, I want to say to him, no, think about it. Think about that one position. If you need it, I want to give you permission to go ahead with it. You know your department better than I do, certainly. But I want to open up that option for you. I don't want to shut it down. That's all I'm saying.
It's very common, and I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but with a department the size of our police department, there are always going to be some kind of turnover. And there's, there's kind of a constant recruiting process, kind of. And to that end, if, if the chief feels that there's a need, I mean, you don't want to overstaff because that costs us too much money. But on the other hand, you don't want to be burdened with too much overtime either. And recognizing that historically, either there's, there's injuries, there's people get another job, they, they move on, they do whatever, they quit. I mean, that's, that's life in a police department, I think. And so to be kind of constantly recruiting, which would speak from Matt's point of at least go ahead and go try to, you know, start hiring at least one person right now, whether that person gets hired June 1st or July 1st or August 1st or whenever, that's probably fine because of the normal course of what happens in a police department, the way I look at it.
Madam Mayor, I would suggest that for, in the interest of time, that we.
Do you want to make a motion?
I want to make a motion that we take the two items, one and two, that's the 13.5.
And remove them from?
From the cut list.
The cuts.
I'm for this half, Matt's proposal on the police force because I agree with you. It's easy, it's the easiest thing when you're doing a budget is these positions are open, just keep them open because it's harmless. But I, I mean, it's the wrong message, the wrong time to do that. So leave one of them in there. So the one, the number 10 would go down to 61.5.
Mm-hmm.
And.
What about converting the part-time, the full-time to part-time?
And I used the 40 that, I don't know what you want to use 11 for. I had, I had put it in for 20, but I'll reduce it to 10,000 because you said you've used up 30,000.
Well, actually, it's like 30,000 has already been saved, right?
Yeah.
So we'll keep it at 30.
Correct, roughly.
Okay. And that was it.
And so that, that stays at full-time. And what about the code enforcement for the city attorney? Do you want to remove that from cuts or leave that in?
Leave it in. Because he's going to.
Okay.
Going to bill for those on, on individual enforcements and tag them onto the, I mean, if it's, if it's acceptable.
I think it's just a rephrasing.
Yeah, I think it's a restatement of recover full costs, is I think what the council member King's saying.
A little bit of savings, but a revenue.
Correct.
So the attorney's office will become suddenly a revenue generating.
Revenue generating, got it.
What a revolutionary idea.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Christine, would you like to call a question, please?
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcock?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Mayor Tiggo Doherty?
Yes. Okay. Last but not least, again, we have public comment. Again, this is, each speaker is limited to two minutes to speak on anything that is not on the posted agenda. limited to two minutes to speak on anything that is not on the posted agenda. So, Horst? Uh, name and city of residence, please.
Shall I go first? May I speak something on the consent calendar, uh, consent calendar, may I make a comment on that? On consent calendar, uh, item issues, or an issue that you want on the consent calendar?
The time when you would have had to speak on a consent calendar?
That's why, excuse me, that's why I'm asking the question, if it's too late for that, forget it, otherwise--
Yeah, it's, it's, unfortunately, it's too late.
Well, in that case, I make a general comment. Horst Young, 52, Coronado, when, when we just go to this struggle, this financial struggle, it actually surprises me how generous we are, for example, on the park issue. We, uh, $100,000 for construction management, just like that, seems to me, the existing staff could well deal with that additional management deal, and why do we have to allocate $100,000, potentially, it doesn't mean it's going to be spent, but why do we so casually approve that? And we're talking about 10, $10,000 for stage and stuff like that, why do we approve $100,000? Now, I don't buy Gary's argument about the financial cost, if a contract is awarded $1.4 million, and it says, wait another two weeks, he's not going to say, I'm going to punish you financially, that's, that's not likely to happen, he's going to get the contract anyway. So why are we so generous in that issue? And here we're highlighting about 10,000 bucks, or 20,000 bucks, when money is so tight, it seems the council is just taking a little more care on that, and saying, 100,000 bucks,